Congratulations. Okay, you've got this meeting full of people that are talking about. This is the one that's good because they have a dark here and.
Yeah. Yeah. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay, good evening.
I did receive a text from Councilman Schuster who said he was going to be five minutes late. So it's already five minutes. We're all five minutes late right now. So we do like to try to start council at 6:30 on time. Otherwise, we get yelled at. So we're going to try to, and I don't blame people. We advertise 6:30. That's why I moved it to 5:30. I know we have a lot to cover tonight. So I appreciate the mayor coming in and Selena from the Office of Economic Community Development, Scott being here from Parks and Rec, and our business administrator Eileen and our finance director Matt. We appreciate you all being here to kind of give us an overview of your proposed 2024 budget. We realize that this is just the start of this process. So I'm going to toss it over to you, Mayor, and we can get started if you would.
Thank you, Council President King and everyone else. And to those of you who are successful on Tuesday night, congratulations. I sincerely look forward to working with all of you again in the next couple of years. We're excited to be here again this year, our second year in a row that we've gotten the budget to you in the first week of November, hopefully allowing all of us to have a little bit quieter holiday season and get the budget process finished well before December 15th when it's due. So especially kudos to Matt Dominus for really working this thing and Eileen Cipriani, who's, they have been working with the directors across the city since the summer to put this together, and we're grateful for all the hard work. So we'll do just a kind of a top line of where we're at in terms of some of the positive highlights, the city's economic health, and, you know, restating what we always talk about on kind of the risk and macro factors that go into thinking about a budget now and then as we plan into the future. So as you guys know, in, I think it was May, we got an investment grade credit rating from the S and P. That was a really big deal. It continues to be a big deal. It's something that we want to maintain. So our fiscal health is really important. The decisions we make on a daily, monthly, yearly basis are really important. We've continued to, I think, do, kind of work the plan, most of the plan that the Pennsylvania Economy League put forth to the city over the course of many years. And as we exited Act 47 in the beginning of last year, we want to make sure that we're continuing to do hard work, right? That was not graduate and go have a great time. That was, you're still on watch, you're still have a long way to go. And I think we're on our way to continuing fiscal health, but we always have to be cautious. I think that'll always be the case in a city like ours. We have now completed, and soon you will get as legislation, the Single Tax Office contract that completes the fifth of five union contracts that we've negotiated here in these, the first four years that we've been in office. We're, we really think we've gotten to fair contracts with each of the units. It means that we're starting again with the clerical union in short order, but that's a significant accomplishment. And I think that we've made some really positive changes in terms of management. We've gotten good salary increases across the board. We'll be looking forward to continuing to work with our collective bargaining units as time goes on. The biggest highlight, I would say, and something we've been consistent on from day one with the first meeting with the clerical union until the last meeting with the Single Tax Office, is that healthcare savings is what we need to do for our budget, for our financial future. We've been able to work with Willis Towers Watson. They've been a great third party for us to achieve really millions of dollars in savings already, and now we will continue to save money. What's difficult, of course, is us saving millions of dollars only means we're not continuing to see as high of cost escalation as we would. I think, Matt, is it right that we think that costs would have been 8% increase in 2024, but we've mitigated them down to?
Yeah, about 8%, Willis Tower. But with the cost savings, they recommended about 2% to 3%, and that's what we put into budget was 3%.
So while we've done a really good job to, I think, mitigate that 5% or 6% increase, we're still having to increase healthcare costs, so.
Excuse me, Mayor, how did you achieve those healthcare savings? Was it in premium? Was it in deductible? Was it in, I don't know, prescription savings? Or what were the highlights?
Really, really, the whole menu of those types of changes. And they were, you know, very arduous negotiations, but to get, you know, some of our units didn't have deductibles at all going into these negotiations. It would be great if we could offer that type of plan, but that's just not realistic, I think, in 2023 for any entity. I don't know of any organization, public or private, that at this point has a no deductible plan. So those are the types of, it's really all the whole menu of things that we've had changes in, but we've still provided excellent healthcare plans. And again, that, the savings, I think, is indicative of where we need to be, and we'll continue to work that.
And are most of those plans tiered? Single, married with child, family?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yep. And in terms of other highlights, new business starts, you've seen, and many of you have come to many of the different grant announcements that we've done. Those are existing businesses and also new businesses, small businesses, larger businesses. But broadly for the economy, we've seen new business starts. I think it's 96 new businesses in the city in the last two years. So we're really seeing people invest in the city, not just in the personal real estate, but also investing their businesses here, creating jobs here, which is great. And we're hoping that sometime in the next, you know, couple of weeks, couple of months, that we will get a positive nod from the Federal Rail Administration that we are going to be one of their chosen corridors for an Amtrak Passenger Rail Line. That remains to be seen, but we are cautiously optimistic that we think would spur a lot of investment. And something that didn't make it on here, but yesterday we were named by U.S. News and World Report, the number four place to retire in the country. Lots of other, I think it was six or seven Pennsylvania cities where, I think that shows, you know, we, relative to other states around us, we have a low tax rate at the state level. We have, as you, everyone in this room knows, we have, it's a beautiful place to live. It's a great place to retire or raise a family. You can, you know, go skiing within 10 minutes, all the things that we all know so well. But it's great to see that recognition. So I think we have a lot of eyes on Scranton for investment. On the other side of it, you know, of course, we're all dealing with inflation. We have our own inflationary costs with fuel and tires and electricity and water that, you know, the city has to bear on our operation side. We have the other post-employee benefits, the OPEB. We've opened up that account, and you'll see a line item in your budget where we're going to fund that account on an annual basis. That's the beginning of a very positive, responsible practice on our end. The liability there is something in the neighborhood of $240 million. We have $2 million, and I think soon $2.2 million will be in that account. It's what we need to do. It's a huge liability over the city that will always be there, so we have to be conscious of that. I went over the healthcare costs. Disaster recovery, setting up our ninth was an example of why it's so important that we, that we plan and we budget and we keep things tight and we don't, you know, borrow frivolously, because in some cases, we might have to borrow in an emergency situation. So that, I think, speaks for itself. And in terms of service gaps, as you, you know, we have to continue to look at what we do in the city. Is there more that we need to do if, you know, if we see a change, say, in the healthcare availability within the city? Are there things that the city's going to need to pick up? We've got that emergency medical service study coming back pretty soon. We'll have to take a hard look at that. So we need to be conscious of potential costs and rising costs. Our next one. Some highlights for the budget for 2024 itself. We are not putting in, we're not going to the market for a TRAN. We're very excited about that. We don't feel we need.
Is that a TRAN or a TAN?
TAN. Did they use both? Choose your own adventure on that.
It's tax and revenue when you see the TR, or it's tax anticipation. Most municipalities use TRAN because they're using all revenues, not just tax.
Gotcha, okay, thanks.
Yeah, I always ask that, too. So this year, in working with PFM, our financial advisor, working with other, getting advice from other folks, and of course, you know, Matt talking with Pell and others, we've determined that we don't need it this year. That means we have enough cash that we don't think that we need an extra funding in that initial year, our initial few months, which is great news. It saves us about $100,000 in fees. So we won't, you guys won't have to do the legislation, we won't need to do a bid for bond council. Eliminating that is, in this budget, is really exciting. We'll, you know, we'll have to see how it goes as years progress, things go on, but we're happy to highlight that. In the budget, we have an incremental tax increase of 3.5% about for an average tax bill, about $36. It's in the spirit that we came to you last year with that my vision, our vision, is that it's easier for households to be able to bake in, you know, maybe $30, $40, a smaller tax increase every year than wait and have years go by and then have a, you know, many hundreds of dollars tax increase. That's really difficult for people to meet. So you see that in there, and we'll go through some of the, not only is that philosophically what we think we need to do in terms of just rising, you know, rising cost of healthcare, rising inflation in those goods and services that we have to use as a city. Also, we have $5 million in increased expenditures through an increased minimum municipal obligation. That's state mandated. We have to pay more than $3 million that we weren't expecting into our pension. The Act 111 salaries, we're happy to get those salaries where they need to be, but there's a cost in the 2024 budget that's over a million dollars more than it was in last year's. And then the assessed value of our properties goes down every year. As we know, it went down over a million dollars, which is about $120,000 of revenue that we won't see because of those decreases. So those are the reasons for that. Another positive highlight is no, we took out the rescue plan line item, as you all know from that rebudget that we worked on. So that one-time funding piece is not in there. Our payroll preparation tax over the course of these last couple of years is now at the expected level. We're very pleased at that. And we're also pleased that the school district came on board in the second year, and now both entities are doing the same tax mix, which is very positive for residents and for our businesses. What you'll see in here, so the new positions that we are proposing, it's really, really three coming from the administration. The fire position is one that we put in there last year, a host of activities that they would do in the fire department, but the most salient in this moment is emergency management. We, when the storm happened, we've had, our team has been working really full-time on the storm mitigation, still keeping up with the 2018 projects we have, but to get to the point where we're now very, very hopeful that we might get this disaster declaration. It has been two months of full-time work from our project manager, our DPW, and our DPW project engineer, or engineering project manager, those two. If we could really use another working-level project manager in fire to kind of complete that triangle, project manager in business administration, an engineering project manager in DPW, and then having one in fire, that would help us, if we had three people, really help us cross our Ts, dot our Is, and looking for things like FEMA and PIMA funding, also for getting those projects done. It's one thing to get the funding, you then have to, you know, make sure that everything that you're doing is what it's supposed to be and documented. That takes.
Mayor, what does the GIS, that acronym stand for?
That's the mapping, right?
Yeah, it's the mapping software.
Geographic Information Systems.
Okay, thank you.
And that's something that we use in planning as well. Then the Parks and Recreation Manager, so, you know, Scott is here as a director. I think we remember what it was like to have a gap. We had someone leave, and there was a gap before we found Scott. We didn't have anyone in the Parks Department that was managing. It would be very, very helpful for a host of reasons to have a deputy director, manager, whatever, you know, whichever, kind of interchangeable titles. We need a second person in that department to help run all the projects. We have more programming that we'd like to do. We don't currently have anyone that can run that programming. We need somebody to help bear the burden of Code Blue that's coming up. Right now, it's really just the Parks Director. Ends up being, you know, last year, when Larry West was his administrator, he was often the one opening up the shelter. Chief Judge often does it himself as well. We really need a second person in that spot. We also have so many parks projects, which you guys are aware of. They're very exciting. We want to continue to do more and more. It's a lot to put on just one director.
So Mayor, could you, the parks that are going to be improved, I know that Weston Field is one of them, that pool replacement down there, and is that building coming down or is it getting replaced or repaired?
The bath house?
Yes.
That'll come down.
It's coming down? Okay. And then Robinson Park, I believe, is included in there, as well as Oakmont Park, is that correct?
Oakmont-Pokes rolling, the mini park in North Scranton. November, it was actually just completed, which is exciting.
Cowell Park.
Grace Park, Connell.
Scott has a list of them.
He'll do, yeah. He'll do.
Okay.
For example.
I'm jumping ahead, Scott. I don't want to take his wind away, then.
Before we move on to parks, though, we talked about the emergency management piece. Where are we at with the threshold? Are we approaching the threshold or are we close?
So that's with Pennsylvania emergency management. What we Wyoming, Lackawanna County, Luzerne County, and Wyoming County submitted was above the threshold, and then PIMA and PIMA takes a look at it, FEMA as well looks at it. We're cautiously optimistic that we'll be over that threshold and that we will get that disaster declaration, but it's really in the hands of the state and then the federal government, so.
But currently, we got ourselves over the threshold?
Yeah, the three counties.
We topped 27 million in validated costs through PIMA.
Yeah, and I have to really give a big kudos to Eileen, to Chief Judge, and to the engineers with Rally Associates. It was a big, big effort to do that here in Scranton, but also to push Luzerne County and other entities within these three counties to get them over. We certainly sustained the largest amount of damage of any borough or township or municipality, and kind of took it upon ourselves to make sure that those other entities were also pushing as hard. We have the biggest financial burden, but it was important that we continue to push entities, and those included some of the universities, especially in Luzerne County that sustained some damage. They didn't know that they could, that they were part of that, and we made sure that they got their dollars in. So cautiously optimistic. We'll let you guys know as soon as we have more information, but we're really hoping that that happens.
Do we know the timeline on any of that?
Hopefully soon, yeah, just kind of waiting.
And then before moving on, so you have no one-time funds from the American Rescue Plan? What were the one-time funds in last year's budget, just to remind?
Last year, I think, was 2.3. I think we, we were high, I want to say it was around 5 in our '22 budget. We didn't use it last year. I think it was 2.3. Did not use it in this year. Took it out, and you, and we reused it to rebudget.
That was that revenue loss piece, right?
Right, right. So we were able to rebudget it and essentially allocate it to some of the pool projects.
So Mayor, is it fair to say, if we included it in the budget, we spent that money, we would actually create a $2.5 million hole for next year?
If we had had to spend it, right, it would have been one-time source, so.
Right.
We certainly needed, we really needed the confidence of having that line item, especially in the '22 budget. When we put in the '23 budget, we didn't think by then that we would need it, but it's still, we were payroll prep tax, some of these things, we were, we thought it should happen, but we weren't 100% sure, so.
You were cautious the first two years with it. Now we kind of feel comfortable that we can go without.
So how much, did we originally put, was it 5.5, but only used so much, or it was two?
We didn't use it.
We never used it.
Yeah, but the, yeah, '22 budget was, I think, 5.
5 million, I think.
23 budget was the 2.3, 2.4. And then now it's not, and we've reallocated it to pool projects, so that's, which is great news. And we're in a lot better position than a lot of municipalities have had to use it for true revenue loss, and so that's, you know, not a position that we would want to be in, but it's the reason for those funds.
Would it be fair to say that a lot of the grants that we applied for to use as matching kind of helped as well? Or does that?
Not with our, not with our operating budget itself, but we wouldn't be able to talk about all these great parks upgrades. We wouldn't have all these things to show if we didn't have the rescue plan and all the grants to match that. So the, I think it's over 90 million.
Right, because we're literally hitting parks across the entire city.
Yes.
Right?
Yep, and it's over, like, with rescue plan plus other grants, we're well over 90 million that we've been able to pull into the city. And not having to use the rescue plan for revenue loss has been, has been really, really something.
So the next piece we're going to talk about is that OECD Communications Director. Now, part of that salary is going to be taken from ARPA funds, correct?
Right. So that would be a mix of ARPA, rescue plan, OECD under Selena, and then some city funds that would come out of the VA.
There were some positions that were in last, prior budgets that used similar funding. Is this the only position in this budget that's using funding like that? Or are we partially funding some positions still with ARPA money?
This, well, this is the only position that we're proposing in this budget that would have a mix of the federal funding and the city funding. The, there's, there's ARPA, there are rescue plan, there are two positions that are funded by ARPA, full stop. Those are, but those are not in the budget, because those are, those are through 2026. Those jobs won't exist after 2026.
And they're also in OECD, correct?
They're, they're not in, they're actually just under Eileen as the rescue plan director. They're, they're fully funded with the rescue plan administrative funds, and those are not jobs that will exist in 2027. So they only go as long as the rescue plan funding is live.
Okay, so they're under the VA's office at this point?
Well, right, they're contracted individuals, so they're 1099 employees.
Yeah.
They report to me just due to the fact that I'm the ARPA director.
Gotcha. And then, speaking of that, so then we also have some positions that have stipends from ARPA, right? Eileen's position has a stipend from ARPA, Matt's position has a stipend from ARPA.
Not, not Matt.
Not Matt, Jessica Escri.
Jessica, is there anyone else that has also has a stipend from?
We also use the two finance people in OECD, they track hours, so it's not a stipend, but if they do hours that are related to the financial activities of ARPA, they're able to add them in.
Okay, thank you.
So for clarity's sake, so there's two fully funded employees from using ARPA funds, and there's a few that are partially or supplemented by the ARPA funds. How many outside the two fully?
Myself, Jessica Escri, and we have two finance people, but that, we're talking about an hour or two a week, so it's a very minor piece of their salary. The way OECD works is if any individual, depending on what funding stream they work in, whether it's CDBG or home, or whether it's a grant, they track hours, and those hours go against those funding lines.
Okay, thank you.
And just, yeah, on the, okay, so, yeah, we'll move to the Communications Director. So this is a role that we, we need. A few examples, let's say kind of three buckets. One is emergencies. So the severe smoke that came at us in June, we were trying to figure out what, what does this mean? What do we need to do to message to the public? What do we need to do for our own employees? You know, so DPW, should our trash routes be suspended that day or not? How does this, how do we do this? We, it's usually in these situations, it was our public health coordinator, Dr. Saxton, until she went to the county, where we have that posted. We'd love to, that grant is still funded, so we're hoping to find someone in there. When it's, we're not able to have a public health coordinator, we, usually it's Chief Judge and I that are trying to figure out what it is we should be doing. So we're trying to figure out the smoke thing. It was 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock at night. We're trying to figure out the schedule for the next day for DPW. That means I'm also the communications on that. So I'm trying to figure out actually how we're managing the city, what are we going to do? At the middle of the night, there's no Communications Director for me to reach out to, so I'm writing the press release, I'm doing the social media posts. I'm capable of doing it, but I'm not sure that that's what the taxpayers vote a mayor in for, to do that type of work all of the time as well. I spend a great amount of my time communicating, which is great, but we really need a Communications Director to be the point person on things, both in emergencies and on the day-to-day. The storm, of course, is another piece. You know, we're out there, we're trying to figure out, we're, Controller and I are out on Frank Street signing a disaster declaration. We're working on just figuring out who's, is there anybody still in danger? Is there anybody still missing? What is the work we need to do? How are we going to get this going? Talking with people and just trying to help people feel comfortable, trying to figure out what we, what we can afford, what we can't afford, what does FEMA process look like? What does PIMA process? At the same time, I'm calling reporters to try to explain to them what's happening. I'm capable of doing it. I've been doing it for four years. It would be far more efficient for residents and businesses and interested parties on
so that we could let, let the individuals that are there come and know what the projects are. So what, what we did, they had done the study, if you recall, several, several years back.
Who was it that did the study over in Kaiser?
GPI did the study.
Okay.
The same engineering group.
So it wasn't HRG is the difference?
No, HRG did East Mountain.
Right.
So what I've asked them to do is to break the, they were looking at the projects initially holistically. I've asked them to break the projects up. So we're breaking them up and talking about them in order of ability to do them. There are some projects that will need to get through DEP, PennDOT, and the Railroad and the Conservation District in order to make them happen. So what we want to do is to see which ones we can tackle first. And I know the Briggs Street one has been on everybody's mind. So they are going to go out there shortly, both Riley and GPI. What Riley has and GPI has told us is they 100% agree that that pipe is, needs to be replaced. But what they want-
What's that, the 24 inch one that everybody's been discussing? Okay.
Right. But what, what they want to make sure of is what's down to the conveyance system from there? Because what we don't know is if that conveyance system still works. So once we make it that the water's not going to come out at that access point, the question is, we want to make sure it actually makes it to where it's supposed to go and doesn't come out on somebody else's property. So they are aware of that and they are working at that, and that's up at the top of their, their to-do list.
Okay, good. So I just wanted to make sure that that's moving forward quickly.
Now, when it comes to the meeting, you're saying there's going to be a meeting in December. Do you know where it's going to be at or what your plan is, who you're going to contact?
No, we're working on dates right now. So once we nail the date down, we'll be able to, you know, pick a location and we'll get that out to everybody.
Yeah, so we don't have to go through all these pieces. I just wanted to walk through some of the tops, top level of all that we're working on. On the last slide is, is parks, as we talked about, some of the, the great things that we're doing, the visual theirs from, I took the picture the other day from the mini park at Market Street. It's coming along really well. It's, it's just going to be a really neat project. Yesterday, we announced the Electric City Fund. So I see this is outside of our operating budget. These are, this is a fund that can take in private dollars. So something we've been thinking about for a long time. We were able to get it off the ground with the Scranton Area Foundation. So it's, it's a fund with two, currently two sub-funds. One for Historic Preservation, really geared toward this building, and one for Parks, really geared toward Na'ag. So the way that it, it's a private fund, so you, with buildings, for example, City Hall, there might be somebody that's from Scranton that lives in Vancouver, Canada right now, but loves this building and would love to, you know, give us $50,000. Will that happen? I'm not sure, but we would love that. We need that vehicle there just in case, right? There's, for these types of things, there are people all across the country and the world who are from Scranton or love Scranton. We want a vehicle that, that private funds can chip in. So I wanted to make sure that we got that off the ground before we submitted this budget, showing that, that we have a private mechanism for people who wanted to donate, to give funds. And though it's, you know, it's, it's live, anybody can donate. The way that it works operationally is each, on the sub-funds, there's a small board. So the mayor, the council president, and the Parks Director are the first board that, to make a decision on the sub-fund. But the Scranton Area Foundation Board has to allow those funds to go out and go for that purpose. Same with Historic Preservation, the Harb President, along with the mayor and the city council president, sit on top of that sub-fund. Any decisions they make would have to go through the Scranton Area Foundation Board. So we wanted to have some controls on that. But I, I wanted to end with that because-
I'm sorry, so it's not a separate foundation?
It's separate from the city. It's not, it's not-
It was not a separate foundation?
Absolutely. It's run through Scranton Area Foundation.
So it's in, in partnership with?
Yep. All the funds are there. The funds, the, the funds, people donate, it doesn't come into the general fund. It doesn't come into City Hall.
No, I just mean a separate foundation just for what you spoke of. So it's just going to go through Scranton Area Foundation?
Right, right. So yeah, the money will come back into the city.
Right, okay.
But it's, it's taken in and administered by the Scranton Area Foundation. So we're really excited about that, and I think it's important to-
So the Electric City Foundation kind of serves as a recommending board or group to, you know, once the funding starts to build up or come in, then the Electric City Foundation would meet and then make suggestions to Scranton Area Foundation, say, we would like funding for X, Y, or Z.
Yeah, exactly. So the, the city could, could say, you know, we, we did, we did all the roof and the towers in City Hall, but we, now we really want to do the stained glass in the Governor's Room and City Hall chambers. Are there funds there? Yes, there are funds there. Could we access them for that purpose? And then it could go. Because some of these repairs, as you guys know, it, we can never, we would never ask our taxpayers to, to be able to, to bear the burden of what some of these costs are. There's things that we have to do. We've been great getting the rack pees and things to complete the roof and the towers. But some of the work that we'd like to do and the maintenance over time, I think it's a useful, potentially useful vehicle. And I wanted to present it this week so that as we do talk about incremental tax increase, we're also standing up this new way for other folks to pitch in who don't probably live in the city.
Just clear this up for me a little bit, so I have a better understanding. So the Scranton Area Foundation is going to be the custodian of this fund? But they have to approve everything for, they have to vote on what they feel before they send it to Electric City Panel or whatever you want to call them?
The mechanism is, I mean, the intent of that mechanism is not that the Scranton Area Foundation Board is going to say, you know, we'd like you to do this instead. It's more, is this the intended use of these funds? So if you had, you know, 20 years from now, you have a different mayor, you have a different council, somebody wants to put this money into a, a private building, right? Something, something like that, not use it for an intended purpose. The board could go back and say, these are the parameters. This is for city-owned assets or city parks, right? It's a, it's more of an internal control than a, that's the intent of it.
Mayor, is it fair to say that the Scranton Area Foundation will only, only consider recommendations by the Electric City Board rather than a million people saying?
Right, that's, exactly. It's written so that the, the council mayor and that, that third person would, would be the ones bringing those, you know, bringing those recommendations about. Certainly anybody could, like the Harb could say, we really would like you guys to use these funds for X purpose. But the, those three people, the council president, the mayor, and the Harb President would be the ones to really make that recommendation up and have the, the funds used in that way.
So that's going to be a separate three-person board, and that's, those are going to be the members? The mayor, president, and someone, the president of Harb Board?
Right. Yeah, President of Harb or Parks Director, and then that goes, they, they, they are the directors of those sub-funds, and then the Scranton Area Board is the, the board of the top fund. Which, which is important because you wouldn't want, you know, you wouldn't want it to be used. You, you need, I think, those tiers of control over the funds to make sure it's always used in the way that it's intended for city-owned assets.
And Scranton Area Foundation will actually have the final say whether it gets funded or not?
Yes, but as long as it's, as long as it's for the stated purpose. If we said we, you know, we wanted, we have a new project outside of the Everhart Museum, we think that this, you know, this new feature in the park would be great. I don't think they're going to say, no, you can't do that, as long as it meets all the criteria for what the intended use is.
The intended use is going to be restoration or upgrades of city assets? Is that?
So for the historic preservation, it's really like this building or the firehouse next door. Some of these, these buildings are so beautiful, but they're, they're so expensive to renovate. If we can have, and there's a lot of people out there that really love these types of buildings. You know, it can help us with those types of, those types of renovations over time, maintenance of the, the building over time. And the same with the, the parks. You know, we want to make sure that anything that we build is, is able to be maintained. So this is a potential engine to help us with those costs.
And it's mainly focused on Na'ag Park and this building?
And that's, that's how I see it. It's written broadly so that you could have it, it could go to other parks. I think the way that, in recent practice in this moment, we're seeing, we've, the QCT parks, we're able to get other funding for, as we, we see with Na'ag and Oakmont and Robinson for that matter, it's harder for us to get money for those parks because they're not in the, the income barrier tracks in the city. So it's kind of geared toward that. But the, the writing of it is, the, the fine print is broader so that you could put it to any city park, but that's certainly our intention. Okay, so I will stop. Thank you for indulging me. I know I took a lot of time.
Before we do move on, though, I do have two, two other things. So the downtown walkability, the pieces of that, we're going to piecemeal them in as we move forward? Is that how, we're going to plan for that?
Yeah, we're working, working with, working with our engineers and PennDOT to figure out how to, what's, what are the steps that we need to take to get, to get that work done, to do two-way streets and, you know, get those, get the traffic calmed. Also, we're still getting funding at the federal and state level. We're waiting to hear back on some of our grant applications for different streets. We've, we've built up a lot of the streets, but we, we probably should do a whole caucus, I would say, on updating you on that. I know Wyoming Avenue, for example, that's sitting with the state right now as to whether we'll get that, that grant funded. So there's, there's a lot of things live there, but I think we have good momentum and a good plan with PennDOT. They're, they seem eager to work with us.
Is that the first piece of walkability that's being implemented, is Wyoming Ave? It's going to turn into, one of the lanes is going to?
That's the, that, we're waiting for that funding to come on. We're, we're still trying to figure out how, how, what the steps are. But the way that Jeff Speck, who did the study with us, recommended is really, is kind of like the traffic, the traffic changes kind of all go in at once. There's ways that you, you know, you educate the public about them and that you'd give, there's different steps you take in for lead time, that you don't just take down stoplights and say like, great, have at it.
Gradual implementation.
Yeah, so. But we, we should do a whole caucus, I think, on that.
And then when it comes to streetscapes, I brought up the Providence Square, like Providence Streetscape. So that money was reallocated, but what is the plan moving forward? Because we were, I was told the other day that you're still thinking about doing the Providence area, but there's another method you're going to use for that. So the Providence piece is going to be reallocated to Biden Street?
Yes.
And what is the funding?
In part, and the other 500,000 was going to flood relief.
And then, so what's the plan for Providence?
So Selena will talk about it more. I don't want to steal her total thunder. So let's let Selena start it and then I'll chime in.
Is it still going to be considered a streetscape or it's going to be a different type of project?
No. So part of the, the rationale behind this is we wanted to, when we first did ARPA, the mayor wanted us to make sure we distributed all of these projects equally. And we knew that the, and we had talked about this councilman, that interestingly enough, Providence Square was half in and half out of the QCT, which made it challenging. So when they changed the, changed the law passed last December, we thought that, we knew surface transportation would be part of it. We had to wait all the way to August to get the rules. Once those rules came into play, we could move forward. To do a streetscape, unfortunately, since they're state roads, like Market Estate in Maine, so we would need to acquire highway occupancy permits for every single driveway that would be in the way. The length of time for that to happen made that not able to be funded under ARPA. The timeframe will be gone. So while we were waiting this entire time, we've been working with the, developing our own plan, but now working with the Redevelopment Authority, which I think will be a better plan. Because if you look at Providence Square, the, the square area has new sidewalks and, and lighting. There is a lot more, I think, that needs to be done there in a more holistic way. And Selena will touch on that when she goes and I'll chime in.
I'm just going to run through some of this really quickly to be mindful of time. Sorry, I'm just going to run through mine pretty quickly to be mindful of time. I want to start off with some of the highlights so far. I know we made a lot of changes with our code enforcement department this past June. So some of the things that we've seen affected since then is due to the cutting the red tape with, with some of the permit change, permit fees, as well as moving a lot of the platform online. We've cut the fees by, on average, up to 70%, depending on the project size. So since June of 2023, we've, we've had 142 new certificate of occupancy requests submitted through the city. We've issued three, over 3,030 permits. Our average turnaround time right now for residential building permits is, is 8.5 days. Our average turnaround time for a UCC exempt permit, which are the ones that we don't need to have the third-party inspection, we've cut that down to just over five days. And then we've had, and so overall, 94% of all of our residential permits are issued within, within 15 days. Along with the permit changes, we still have Kelly sending monthly up, or weekly updates to council to address all of the properties that you all are bringing to us so that you guys are staying up to date with what's going on and the current status of, of those properties. We also implemented our rental registrat, rental registration ordinance this past July. So since then, we've really hit full force within the past few months with that one. At the end of 2022, we've had just over 1,900 units registered within the city. Currently, we have a 63% increase from last year, and we still have more coming in. So we have over 3,200 units registered as opposed, versus our number from last year. Of those units, we found that 256 properties weren't paying refuse fees. And again, these are all just numbers that are coming in within the past two months. Of those 256 that weren't paying refuse fees, that alone will bring in an additional 700, or 77,700 in refuse collection fees for 2024. The city also recently under contract with a law firm to start tracking the foreclosure registries within the city. So once we get that started, the purpose of the registry is to ensure that vacant and abandoned properties resulting from foreclosure, we have a way of tracking them properly so we can maintain, making sure that we get the fees paid to the city from that, but also so that we have a database of all of these properties that are getting foreclosed on so that we can help track them to, hopefully to the point before they get to become blighted properties within the city. Just from last year, the city of Scranton had over 130 foreclosed properties in the city which came from real estate data. So all of that, we should be getting registration fees from, from those properties, which we haven't. So going into next year, that'll be something that we're able to start doing again. Going back to, it'll touch on some of the grants and some of the projects that we have funding. As of right now, we have 23 grants that we applied for, for the city, for the city-funded projects. Some of them are going to be, we do have grant matches coming from city dollars. So that's not, the 28 million isn't the total for these projects. So that, that really is going to go into a lot of the streetscape projects that we have within the city. Along with that, we have, we've administered 10 LSAs to community organizations, 16 community rack pees to organizations for revitalization within the city. This year, we issued 10 microgrants to new businesses, and we have 15 applications still pending. So that program is going really well. We also have our loan-to-grant program, which we've, we've only administered three, which doesn't seem like a lot, but the three that we did administer to businesses totaled over $330,000. And those three businesses alone were able to, were able to have three, or nine full-time jobs for residents in the city. So from the past year, we've had 96 new businesses register within the city. And we would like, like, due to a lot of the funding that we're pushing out to the businesses in the city.
Now, when it comes to that loan-to-grant, has that been for a couple of years now? When, when you're saying you did three of the loan-to-grants, is that three this year or three since the implementation?
It's three this year. I don't have the number off the top of my head for the total, but we can get it. But that three is just for 2023. So some of the citywide streetscapes that we, that we are focusing on, and so this, a lot of them came from in conjunction with the 2023 walkability study. Linden and Washington, that's going to be a complete street. We're doing stormwater management, lighting, paving for full pedestrian safety along the sidewalks and adding street trees. Lackawanna Ave, that's going to be another complete streets with additional ADA access and compliance. We're also going to be having bicycle lanes just to enhance a lot more pedestrian safety. And then Wyoming Ave, going back to the one that we talked about with Eileen, is, that's going to be a transportation alternative. So Lackawanna Ave to Mulberry, that's where we're focusing on putting protective bike lanes there. Whereas the complete streetscape is going to be focused around from Biden to Linden. With some more of that-
Does Lackawanna Avenue include the wall?
Yes.
Oh, it does? Okay. Thank the Lord.
So going back to the, the 23 grants, those are some of the other projects that we're going to be, we're going to be focusing on the city of Scranton traffic signal improvements, emergency operation and training center, the pedestrian bridge project, which is in conjunction with PennDOT. So that's going to, right now, we only have the funds to do the engineering and the design piece of it. But when that's done, ideally what that's going to do is that's going to connect the, the trail right around like Railroad Ave to the transit center. So, and that's in conjunction with PennDOT. And then we've also taken in recycling and education. So this will go along with the, how we plan on like redoing some of the, the things for next year is we're going to be focusing a lot more around like recycling, education, and just sustainability for the residents within the city.
I have a quick question before you move on.
I have a quick question before you move on. So the emergency operations and training center. Can you tell me any progress with that or where are we at with that?
So as of, did we, were we, I'm not, were we awarded the grant?
No. So that's an appropriation, a community appropriations through Congressman Cartwright's office. So we're still waiting for full, full approval on that. Chief Judge has done some preliminary work and he has funding put aside to be able to do some of the, the early planning and design work.
So this is, this isn't the Sereni Center?
No, this is up at CTC.
The Career Technology Center.
Yeah. These are some of the highlights from our HUD-funded projects. One of the big ones that we do is the homebuyer program, which is funded through a nonprofit in the city. So this past year alone, through the first-time homebuyer program, we've sold 30, they've sold, are funded 32 new first-time homebuyers within the city. We have another six pending right now under contract and then another 14 families that have been approved to utilize that funding for first-time homes in Scranton that are in the shopping phase right now, just buying a home. We've allocated $590,000 of CDBG funding to assist with some of the parks projects. Blight remediation, we've, we've spent a little over $300,000 right now to demolish 16, 16 properties in the city in 2023. We have another six under contract right now that, pending the timeline from the contractor that should be done hopefully by the end of the year. And then we've also had 92 requests for release from condemnations this year as well. So all of the homes that have, that have been condemned, the property owners, or whether it's a new owner or an existing owner, they're taking the blighted properties and doing the proper permitting process to release them from condemnation and getting them back on the tax roll. So looking into next year, some of the projects that we want to highlight for 2024, we are, for 2024, we want to provide a total of $40,000 in funding for the building blocks program with a designated nonprofit. $10,000 of that is going to be allocated to residents to repair sidewalks if they have a 50-50 match. So this will be very similar to like the Beautiful Blocks program with Neighbor Works, only this one we want to allocate a specific amount for sidewalks within, in front of homes. This is not a new position, but the city plans to negotiate a current new, a newly-hired housing inspector when we do contract negotiations to adjust their hours to do. We don't know how that will look, but ideally it'll be after hours and weekend hours for a newly-hired code enforcement inspector. So we'll, we'll have that finalized at the conclusion of the contract. And then with the newly-hired executive director with the Scranton Redevelopment Authority, we're going to be reinstating the blight board, which will help us with the revitalization of the, of the city when it comes to the blight project. So instead of just knocking them down, which is what we historically have really only had the ability to do, now the SRA has the, the ability to acquire these properties with like eminent domain, so they can then go forward and rehab these properties. So that's going to be, that's going to be exciting that we plan on doing next year. And then along with that, in partnership with the SRA, we're going to be aggressively going after several funding sources to focus of revitalization in the North Scranton neighborhood. That one, we've been restricted because it doesn't really fall, its pockets of that neighborhood falls into LMI, but as a whole, we haven't been able to do any full force, like, we haven't been able to allocate that due to it not being a low-income area. So one of the first thing that we're going to do is apply to designate that area with, as a CRIS. And by doing, by North Scranton, getting that designation, we'll be able to capture state and local tax dollars for the purpose of revitalization and, and development, specifically for businesses and affordable housing in that neighborhood. PFH, PHFA funding and then federal mixed-use development funds for affordable housing. So it'll still be like mixed-use development, but by getting the, getting those, those dollars, we're able to then have them restrict the development to affordable housing as opposed to like luxury apartments that we typically see from our developers.
Selena, is there a timeline for us to put together a CRIS, a CRIS board?
Yes, once we start the application process, what was that? We have to get it. Once we get, like, once we, once we do the application and we are able, like, once we get designated as, or that, that area gets designated as a CRIS, then we will have a timeline in place to put together a board.
Okay, so once they say, okay, Scranton qualifies for the CRIS, then the first step is to develop a board?
Yeah.
Right, okay. And then from there, funding becomes available or they can apply for funding or what have you?
Yeah, that mean, yeah, once we get the designation, we'll be able to apply and qualify for more of the tax credit funding.
And that's the game plan to address North Scranton, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And what does the, what does this designation do? Can you explain that?
So, yeah, I'll, I'll kick it off and then you can. So the Shapiro administration is still developing what the CRIS looks like under their, under them.
The what administration?
The Shapiro administration, Governor Shapiro's administration. Their, their DCED secretary, Rick Seiger, is, he and the governor are still, still developing the parameters. Because it's a, it's a designation that has existed before. I've talked to the mayors of Allentown and Lancaster. They, they have had them and think that they were great for their neighborhoods that they designated. The Shapiro administration's still finalizing what, what they want it to look like and then we'll have to apply.
Right. So historically, what would happen is it would be a small defined area to the size of acres. So it won't be the entire area of North Scranton. Those buildings, properties that are within, within that, the tax dollars that would typically go to the state, we're able to reuse those. So whether we, we being the SRA and the SRA, the new board that would form, whether they use them as they are in order to do projects of economic development, facade, what have you, or they could do bond, take out a bond and then pay the bond back. So there's a number of different methodologies that they could use. But it's a strong economic development tool, like the mayor said, Bethlehem used it and Lancaster used it very effectively.
Eileen, what does it stand for? Community redevelopment investment zone or something?
I think it's community revitalization investment zone.
Revitalization, okay. Thank you.
And then with that, in that area, you're going to restrict development to affordable housing only?
No.
No.
No. That's just some of the homes that are going to be developed or some of the businesses that are going to be doing mixed use, depending on what type of funding. The funding source restricts it. So it depends on who is using what funding source. So the city and the SRA isn't going to be the ones doing all of the development. We are talking to a lot of different nonprofits that, that are in the area too. So it just depends on what funding they go after and what the building that they plan to redevelop ultimately qualifies for.
I have a quick question going back to code enforcement inspectors. So, you know, we get constant calls that there's construction and rehab going on, you know, probably without permits after four o'clock and, and on the weekends. So just, just to clarify what you said earlier, the only way to address that is through the CBA?
So to change their hours right now? So right now, code enforcement has mandated overtime. Those calls, those complaints that are coming in, we don't get them as emergency calls. So a lot of the times, we don't get them until operating business hours. So that, and then when they're out doing patrols, again, they're not patrolling at these hours, they're not patrolling on the weekends. We all see it, like, we all see it like in the neighborhood, but we can't address it until we're back in the hours. So like, the, the overtime that they currently have, again, that's, there's, we're restricted based on their current CBA as to what we're, what they're able to do. So ideally, we will have, and again, it's not going to be an additional position. We have a current vacancy and every time we have a vacancy, it's kind of going to be like a rookie code enforcement. So the new person that's coming in will be on the shift that is 11 to 7, 10 to 2, and then one or two weekend days. Again, we, we can put in what we're requesting for this, but ultimately, we're, we don't get, we don't get it finalized until after negotiations.
So when, when can we see, when is the negotiations going to happen? Is it, is it this year or?
Yes. Negotiations will take place probably, hopefully will start before the end of the year.
Yeah.
The contract ends in the year.
Yeah.
So there'll be language hopefully in there that provides for after-hours instead of, like, an emergen- I know what you mean, emergency, if there's, if there's a fire, they got to go out, right? And condemn the property or not?
That won't affect our emergency overtime yet.
No, I understand that, but like, that's the only, that's the only overtime that's issued now is for an emergency. But no one's watching, no, like, and the police don't have the authority to stop anybody, correct? Like, putting a roof on without, without a permit.
Correct.
So we have to pretty much wait until, you know, it's embedded in the CBA?
Yeah. Well, because unfortunately, the way it is right now, like, the police have their software, code enforcement has their software, so a police officer can't, like, how is he supposed to know if somebody actually has a permit? I know that we are supposed to, like, they're supposed to display. So, so yeah, so by having somebody after hours that is able to just regularly patrol the neighborhoods, like our, our normal enforcement officers do, they'll have, they'll be able to go and if they get complaints after hours or if they get calls.
Or respond, yeah. Okay. Or respond to a complaint.
Yes.
So we just got to sit tight and see what happens with the negotiations.
Yes.
So what's the plan if it doesn't get in the contract? Is there a Plan B or no?
That's Plan A. Unfortunately, like, it, it's still an issue that we have to address. I think if Plan A, we're hoping that because there is a very justifiable need for that right now. So if that doesn't, then we, I think we're just going to have to get creative as to what else we can, we can do with the overtime hours. And I don't know what that looks like.
Maybe you could do a memorandum of understanding with the union to create something.
All right. And then, I lost where I was. I think the last, I wanted, the last thing I wanted to touch on before I pass it over the sky is that it actually rolls right into Parks and Rec. Is right now, obviously, we have a lot of vacant, vacant and vastly overgrown properties within the city that are well outside the scope of any like typical landscape company. So with those ones, we plan on using some demolition and blight funds that we have to clear out and level these properties. And then long-term, it will then get passed over to Parks and Rec for the, for the blight crew that they're going to be hopefully hiring for 2024.
So before we move on, can you, I don't think council's really had an update since I think Eileen moved over to VA's office. What is the chain of command when it comes to code enforcement and rental registration? Are they falling under Selena? Do they, I know before Ms. Cipriani oversaw Tom Olewski, who was overseeing the department, is this still the chain of command? Or could you explain the chain of command?
It should still be the same, the same chain of command. Really, the only function Eileen took with her at the VA's office is the ARPA, but it would still be rental, code enforcement management, Tom Olewski, myself.
Okay. When it comes to rental registration, how are we doing in terms of rental registration? I know we do get complaints about code enforcement, we do get calls about rental registration. Are we, are the accounts set up? Are we taking funds? Are we registering rental properties? And where are we at with that process?
So we are, we are getting registrations coming in, all of those. Which, oh. All right. Yeah. So, so far, like I said, since we've, since we've implemented the program, we've had over 250 rental discrepancies. We, and we've had a 63% increase in the number of units that we've registered to date versus where we were at at the end of last year. So we are getting, as of right now, the intended result because we're able to identify a lot of the units we didn't know about before. So, yes.
So we are, we are taking payments for the rental fee? We're registering properties and anyone who's been identified who hasn't paid their fee, we're removing them from the list to say that they've paid and they're currently up to date on their rental registration fees?
Yes, that's how, like, if, yes, if they're in communication with the office and they're submitting the proper paperwork or submitting the data through TLEME, then yeah, we should, we should have track and that, that's what's happening.
Okay. It's going smoothly right now?
Smooth is a relative word. So, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. It's new, so we are having some hiccups. We definitely had to pause a couple of things. We're reevaluating some letters that we're sending out to, to residents. So it's like, we're working through some kinks with just unveiling a program or a new, a new ordinance within the last couple of months. So as, I think, we're, it's going as smooth as we can. And like I said, we're getting the intended results right now.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, fantastic. Good evening, council. So prior to me going into our improvements in construction for next year, I just want to highlight a few of the positives coming out of parks this year and things that we've accomplished. So despite some improvement projects that we had undertaken at the beginning of the summer, all of our aquatic facilities were open throughout the city this summer, which was fantastic, provided the ability for all of our families and residents to get out and really experience some refreshing fun this summer. We've completed three projects as, as the mayor had referenced, that'd be Nova Bridge O'Connor's and Mini Park, which will be finished here in the next week or two. We have implemented the framework of our future field usage licensing agreements, hoping that this will launch in the spring of 2024, so all leagues can be registered under that. This will better the relationship between the city and our, our little leagues and leagues of that nature that serve our youth and allow them to experience sports and teamwork and just the good things that those kind of relationships can affect children. It also increases the ability for both the leagues and the city to provide funding in the form of grants or those natures for themselves or through us to those leagues. We've utilized the Showmobile upwards of 20, close to 30 times this year and facilitated over a dozen monthly events in our parks that were put on either by the community or some of our partners that we have assisted with. This includes the Neighbor Works NEPA Fall Fest at Clover, LaFesta, the Memorial Day and Veterans Day events, the Scranton Teachers Federation, and all the festivals and carnivals that have occurred up at NAOG. We've completed dozens of projects within the parks, whether in response to 311s or proactive management by the Parks Team. These are also in partnership with the youth advocacy program that we relied on heavily this summer. They've completed projects in every single park within our city in order to upkeep and maintain and improve the experience of the people within our parks, including redoing the pavilion and rehabbing it at Fellows, Fellows Park, opening up green spaces.
Selena, do you want to move the screen? Yeah, sorry.
I'm still, this is just me. Yeah, this is just me running through some stuff real quick. I apologize. Opening up green spaces and handling the not-leak infestation throughout the city and really allowing our parks to shine for what they are, which is a, a fantastic collaboration of open spaces within our city where people can feel free to recreate. So moving on to 2023, 2024's improvements in construction, exciting stuff here. So as I mentioned, we did three last year. We have four times that many projects coming down the pipe for 2024, whether the construction, finishing phases, or the implementation and beginning phases that will be starting in the next fiscal year. So exciting for the city and exciting for everybody at this table. Starting with that, that'd be Connell Park, that's DCNR CDBG funded, a complete rehab of Connell Park. Weston Park, we already have playground equipment about to be ordered and renderings drawn up, so Weston Park is going to also be receiving a rehab, DCNR CDBG funded as well. Oakmont Park, which is already under construction, playground equipment is going in as we speak. And it's more than halfway done, which is really exciting for the citizens on East Mountain. That is ARPA and city-funded. Robinson Park, we have already ordered the playground equipment and we have laid out the renderings of where the improved trails through the area up there will be, near the lake and into the woods area. The engineers did that last week. DCNR and ARPA funded. Capous Avenue Splash Pad and Park and Community, just all around center. ARPA and DCED funded. We have all the splash pad components that were delivered in the past two weeks at Weston Field, waiting for installation in the spring. We have all our renderings and final designs with our engineering firm and Fancy Parsley doing the architecture work for any, the structure on the property.
Scott, is that where the old Capous Avenue pool was?
Yes, sir.
That's where that's going to be?
Yes, sir. It's, it's going to be a fantastic addition to that community and really serve the members of that community, as well as in partnership with UNC, any events that they will be having at that location. It's going to be just a great place to gather and recreate for the city.
thrilled to hear that. That's, that's great.
Yeah.
You're saying that's going to start in the spring?
I'm sorry, I meant.
You're saying that's going to start in the spring?
Yes. So all, all the, all the equipment's already on, onsite here at, in the city and we've received delivery of that. The renderings are done, the design's done. We're just waiting to get the groundwork done, which will be this fall, and then the actual construction and implementation of everything will be in the spring. And hopefully, we'll have another great facility that's open for next summer. So that, that's exciting. And that's ARPA and DCED funded. Moving on to the Weston Field, the pool rehabilitation, that's ARPA funded. We've contracted with BKP, that's the same firm that is working with the NAOG pool designs. They're fantastic. They do a great job. So they're in the design phase right now and they've done some initial surveys for that restoration of the NAOG, or, excuse me, the Weston Pool Complex. The Connell Park Pool, that's ARPA funded as well, is with Riley and Associates and The Connell Park Pool, that's ARPA funded as well, is with Riley and Associates, and they have been working expressly over the past few weeks to get as many issues that they are going to tackle come springtime identified. Some of our pool operations staff have been down there with them, noting all those things, and that there's going to be a lot of progress made at Connell Park and improving that pool. Gray Street, which is an LSA, and Billy Barrett, LSA and city match, they are set up for Phase Three of our programs of renovating and rehabbing our parks and green spaces. So that'll be in the process early next year. And then Phase Four, which we've identified, it's Cloverfield and Darcy Park are two spaces that I think would be great to add some, get a facelift and add to the community with some new things done with them, design, programming, implementation of what we have going on. And of course, the skate park down at West, well, which is ARPA funded, and we're hoping to have it designed in early 2024 for the skate park for the city. So it's exciting stuff.
While you're, while you're here and we're reviewing the, the parks, I actually had something that I wanted to bring forward to you that I just received a complaint on last night.
Yes, ma'am.
Regarding Cloverfield. So just real quick, they had witnessed a Walmart tractor trailer actually driving onto the grassy area, and they were concerned about potential damages to the area as a result of that, that truck. So wanted to be able to get someone out over there to, to check it out and see if there's anything.
Yes, of course. Yeah, we'll get out there tomorrow morning and see if there's any ruts or anything in the field that need to be filled in.
Yeah.
I appreciate you letting me know that, yeah.
Of course, yes.
I was unaware of that, so...
Yeah, sorry to give you that.
And if there's any, any citizens that ever need any assistance from the parks, or they see something in the parks that are amiss and shouldn't be, they can either contact the 311, or they can go directly to the Parks and Rec page and email me directly. And I, I like to get on top of those things that we can handle immediately, that are immediate citizen requests, things that they see wrong that we can hop on top of that aren't long-term projects, like the things that I just spoke of. So moving into our operating budget for next year, I'm sure everybody's eyes are just going to go directly to the bottom line. So there's a $37,000 and about $500 increase from 2023. Now, that is only a 2% increase. These increases mainly come from our salary line items and our professional services line items. These professional services pertain to the pool and water filtration and testing, as well as lifeguard training and certification refunds. Now, our capital budget has gone down, but our capital budget for this year is going to include a new truck for the blight crew that was proposed, as well as the Connell Park roof replacement curves. Currently, the ABC Bicycle Coalition utilizes that for their activities and their community efforts in getting bikes to as many people as possible. For those net, excuse me, for those items, they need a functional roof on that building, which it currently doesn't have. So we're working diligently to get that for them. Miscellaneous park upgrades, such as the parks accessibility, safety, playground equipment, fields and courts renovation, et cetera, anything that may fall into making our parks a more safe and utilize a usable space for our citizens to go and recreate and create memories, is something that we are always looking forward to improving. The parking lot at Nova Brino, now that we have that beautiful park up there to go along with our exciting splash pad that is just packed every day during the summer, we need some more parking because the on-street parking that is available up there is also shared with the residents, obviously. So we need to afford a safe place to park for our residents who want to utilize the park and the splash pad. Billy Barrett Park, which we've spoke of, the improvements down there, as well as three truck leases that are coming from DPW to parks. These leases were held on by DPW and paid for DPW, but parks will be taking them on and paying for the vehicles that we utilize. So moving on is our salaries, and we will have the big things that we're going to have on here is obviously the addition of the Parks and Recreation Manager. The part-time receptionist salary is increased from $12 an hour to $16 an hour, and of course, the addition of two union positions for the blight, which council requested, and parks is more than willing to take on because that is something that we want to address in the city as well, and we already do very similar activities in parks, so that'll be easy for us to manage. And so the Parks Manager, I know this is something that we're going to talk about, but a, some tasks that that manager will attend to will be performing, obviously administrative management and manual tasks, ensuring the highest, the safe and high-quality green spaces, pools and facilities. Importantly though, is be supporting myself, the director, in implementing these parks projects and improvements and maintenance. As I said, this year, we only had three, next year, we have about a dozen. There's a lot of project management logistics and things that go into just those projects that aren't included in our day-to-day as the Parks Department, and we are working tirelessly every day to make sure that these parks in the city look and are as fantastic as they present to the citizens, but we could always use a little bit of help on that front. And I, my personal goal, because I see it every day and I see what a real asset it is to the community is the Weston Field House, I would like to open the building back up to the pre-COVID hours of operation, and having a manager would assist me in doing that because I see what the Irish Boxing Club or the basketball gym or the pool does to get not only other residents, but the children into a positive environment after school or during the summer. And the fact that a lot of people, whether it be after work, they can't bring their kids there, or these kids can't get in after school when they're involved in after-school activities, cannot utilize this community center to its full potential. So I would really like to open that up later in the weekdays and on to the weekends, the manager would assist with that. We already talked about logistical coordination, but that's going to be especially huge when it comes to that new licensing agreements that we talked about with all the little leagues and football leagues and soccer leagues, and that's not just the leagues within the city, but people that come and utilize those fields. We are going to be licensing out all these fields to all of these organizations, and there's going to be a lot of logistics that goes into the fees, the conditions, the repairs of those fields to make sure that they're in top condition for everyone who's going to be utilizing them throughout the year, as well as park rental and event management. And the biggest thing that's affected a lot of people when it comes to aquatics this year, not just in the region, but in the country in total, is lifeguards. You can't open things without lifeguards. Luckily, this year, we had a good returning staff, and we were able to recruit a few more to be able to open every single aquatic facility that we have. But lifeguard recruitment, retention and scheduling is huge, as well as when we do open this new pool that we're getting at NAOG, we need to program it. We need to have it effectively programmed and effectively managed in order to maximize its, its output for our citizens and for the community. So, thank you, that's all I have.
Now, when it comes to the new licensing of the fields, is that going to be something that's coming through the Parks and Rec, or is it going to be something that's coming through licensing inspections?
So that is through Parks and Rec?
Yeah, so it, it's going to be managed by Parks and Rec, obviously, they're parks. I just, we have somebody in our office that's assisting Scott with sending the agreements out right now.
Okay, now, in the past, what, they had lease agreements, and they were multi-year lease agreements, correct?
I'm not familiar with that.
They were, so yeah, we have lease, they were lease agreements, were, key word. These lease agreements were renewed neither by the city nor by the leagues, per se. They're out of date for years at this point, and these aren't, the lease agreements themselves, and John Hart, the solicitor for the city, solicitor, or, excuse me, is better explaining this, but I'll take my shot at it. It's, this improves the city's ability to get grant funds for these leagues, as well as the leagues to get grants for themselves, because if we were to get audited and there was no formal contractual words between the city and the league themselves, an agreement, per se, all of these things, these grants that were issued to the leagues would get removed. So therefore, they'd have to pay back or remove the upgrades. Therefore, if we just have a contractual agreement with the city and the league that just states that the league, nothing will change with any of the leagues that are currently at their place, that have been there for years, decades at this point, right? Nothing will change in their operations, it's just a piece of paper between the city and the league that explains, we are allowing you to use this, you are utilizing it and maintaining it, and now it allows us both to go after monies and grants and things of that nature that will better the leagues and improve them for the children of this community.
So now, these are going to be one-year licensing agreements, or they're going to be multi-year like the...
We're looking at only multi-year for the longstanding leagues and leagues of people coming in, say like the soccer league, the adult soccer that plays down at Weston Field every Sunday, we'll go year by year with them because they've changed locations multiple times. So that's as far as we've gotten. IT is currently working on a landing page at the framework that we talked about that will mimic other cities that we've looked at, such as Allentown or Bethlehem, where it's going to be a completely open and accessible thing to any citizen that wants to go on the city's page, what fields are open, for what periods of time, and here's where, how you can access them. You sign up for it. Now, the leagues that are longstanding will be given that preferential treatment because they've been there for forever, right? So it's not going to be Little League, sorry, you're gone, no, it's, you're there, nothing will change. These are, the time slots and things of that nature are more for the fields that are utilized by organizations that are there for a Saturday every month, or things of that nature, you know what I mean?
So the old process, just the leases weren't, they didn't upkeep the leases and the renewals of the leases? Was that what the issue was?
When we have a lease, we give up our rights to that property, per se. It's kind of like how a normal lease works, like we are giving ownership, per se, rights to that league of that land. The city is backing away from it, per se, for that period of time. Please jump in if I'm misexplicating that.
This was flagged, so going back to all of the park improvements that we're allocating federal funding to, so this was flagged to us by DCNR, we relinquish what's called like site control when we have a lease agreement. So any other federal funding that the city is using for the parks, again, going back to what Scott said, if we get audited, we, we will then owe all those monies back because at the time, we relinquished site control. Thankfully, like, we don't, all of those leases are expired, so that, that really wasn't an issue. But it also, all of the, like, a lot of the LSAs and a lot of the grants that these little league organizations or the junior league organizations are getting through the county, if they don't have site control from the city to do work on city property, then the little league organization, any work that, or any grants that they're getting independent of the city, they will then owe all those monies back if these are not in place when they apply for those.
The upshot is that we, most of these agreements were just out of date when we got here, and it's taken us, it's taken us time and bandwidth to be able to get to the point where we finally are able to do, have these agreements, and we wanted to get it right. So John Hart in the Solicitor's Office, our OECD Solicitor, has been really great on this. Scott's been integral in getting it, in getting things over the finish line to, to this point. Same with Jack Rieger in IT because there's that interface that has been, made it much easier to build in. So it's, you know, one of those things that just, it was easy to, easy for, easy to let go and not renew, and we, these are historic, you know, leagues that are always on these fields, but the paperwork needs to be in place, so we're happy that that's finally happened.
So very understandable about written contracts with these groups and organizations, so that relationship shouldn't change?
Right, exactly. Yeah, it's just, it's, it's formalizing, it's formalizing again, making sure that there's an agreement, usage agreement with, with these leagues.
And these associations still get their own equipment, maintain these fields, cut the grass, byproducts such as dirt and other things, and maintain the fields, although the city's not relinquishing their control?
I mean, it's still city property, so it's, you know, we're not, we're not the ones that are on the hook to maintain the baseball diamond, but we still, the rules still apply that, you know, since we just had a political season, like, you wouldn't have political signs on a city-owned field even though it's leased to a little league. So it doesn't change the nature of the fact that it's a city-owned land, but the, the little league does take over the, the property for their purposes for that time.
So for the sake of time, could we have them two gentlemen come in prior to when these seasons start and really explain it? Because there's going to be a lot of questions. I'm still trying to wrap my head with what you're saying and how grants could come through or not, and that'd be, just have, could I have them two gentlemen come in, like, before the baseball season starts, or just, just so we can dedicate some more time to it, and so the public will have a better understanding?
Yeah, I'd, I'd say the most important part to focus on is that these are to protect the leagues.
I understand that, or almost understand that, but I think a caucus dedicated to that would be helpful for everybody.
Yeah, that's fantastic. I think it'd be better to explain that in law form.
Just to clarify, what two gentlemen are you requesting come in?
The Solicitor, Mr., the guy from IT.
Oh, okay.
You're the, the two that are, are handling this, so.
Okay, well, we appreciate you all coming in this evening, taking the time to explain the proposed budget. I know that we're going to have future caucuses with some of the other departments as we move forward, so thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
We're going to take a about a three-minute break here before we begin the actual council meeting.
So Mr. King, and I know we'll get to touch on this all through the budget process, the only thing we really didn't focus on tonight was the salaries and, like, expenditure increases, but I'm sure as we go, we will discuss all of those further.
Yeah, all the departments are going to come in and explain all those aspects.